We have two is the agenda.
From the one that we mailed out, we've added a class size resolution, eight under action items, and that will have a request for increase in one area that we can discuss when we get it. That's a new addition from what, when you were packing this.
Okay, without addition, Chair, entertain a motion to approve the agenda. A motion is in second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Locklear, any further questions? Not for call for question, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Next, approve the minutes of the July 16th meeting. Y'all are ready, Chair, entertain a motion.
Sure move.
Have a motion, Mr. Strickland, please. Have a motion in second, is there any further discussion? Not for call for question, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, superintendent information.
Okay, the under eight, the nutrition department bid process, that was a question raised last month when we presented about were there other vendors that bid, and I've already sent that to you in an email and a letter showing you that there were, I just put that in there for information. Just competitive bids.
Is there any, any question? Information on that, I was a little confused last time, but I think I have to clear it up. Mr. Murphy.
Next, we have softball and football schedules. You know, a lot of you attend a lot of these events, there's a lot going on already. Next, we have some recognitions, we have some young ladies here tonight, and we will start with primary school, we're gonna have the principal say a little something and recognize our teachers of the year for this school year, they were recognized at the end of this past school year, but everyone wasn't able to be there and want to do it publicly at this board meeting. So we'll start with Ms. Richardson.
It's my pleasure to introduce the Lanier County Primary School Teacher of the Year. This is her 11th year teaching in Lanier County Schools, and she's been around Lanier County a little bit longer than that, but she's taught third, first, and second, she's presently teaching second, and I can speak very highly of her, not only as an administrator, but as a parent who, she also taught one child, just outstanding teacher and does a wonderful job and cares about every one of her children very deeply. Congratulations, Ms. Valerie Klein.
Thank you.
It's my pleasure.
Go ahead.
It's my pleasure to introduce Lanier County Elementary Schools Teacher of the Year, Ms. Tanya Starby, and one of the compliments I can give her, she makes me want to be in fourth grade again, I mean, she makes it so exciting, so engaging, right now we have a cartoon in her classroom that we're waiting to see what it's gonna be, so she just, she brings stuff in and the kids will need to wear class, so it's my pleasure to recognize Ms. Tanya Starby.
All right, for the middle school.
Stephanie Ginnis is about to start her sixth year at Lanier County Middle School, and we are delighted to have her, I don't know what we would do without her, because she does everything from lead the special ed team at the middle school, she also has this role at the high school, she does our yearbook, just in and everything, she's a big promoter of our Renaissance program, so Stephanie just does a lot in many different ways, and we appreciate all that she has done, she's very deserving of Teacher of the Year recognition, Stephanie Ginnis.
If you did all that, smile, be ready to tell him.
All right, and next we have, Mr. Pulppe for high school.
It's my pleasure to have this, Ms. Margaret Montgomery, is the high school teacher of the year, she's been teaching 25 years, 23 of which have been here in Lanier County Schools, she has been the teacher of the year for the high school for four different occasions, so we're proud to announce Ms. Margaret Montgomery, and we're glad to have her on board, she's a workaholic, she's the first one there, last one there, we must have.
Do you have certificates? Yeah. Congratulations. Congratulations. Ms. Ginnis. Congratulations. Ms. Montgomery, oh, the system. Congratulations. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you ladies. And feel free to stay or to go, I know you're in a busy schedule.
There's a band meeting at the high school.
You better go.
Thank you.
The next thing that we have are some little preschool updates, each principal, they kept it simple because I asked them to begin with, and if you can kind of get those lights for us, I can move the slides forward and we can do it. Now, we're gonna start with the primary school, and of course you can see the background, for those of you that haven't seen it, they're in Oak House or maybe been out there, it was painted, and the floor, the carpet came up, put the new flooring down, and certainly looks a lot more feeling, and smells a lot more appealing when you come down there. Ms. Richardson.
We have a lot of exciting things going on at the primary school, we're proud to announce that more than 90 percent of our first and second grade students met or exceeded on the local assessment that we gave at the end of the year, 90 percent in math, 92 percent in English majorities, and 94 percent in reading. We currently are working, as the Common Core has come in, we're doing some changes to the assessment, of course, we do not do a state mandated assessment, so we are kind of working on making the release CRCT, adapting that to the needs with the Common Core GPS. Teachers last year were provided with a lot of time to make those transitions to CCGPS, that's still a process that they're going through, and they will have a lot of time this year, as well as working on things like differentiated instruction, where we found, you know, our teachers know how to differentiate for the children, so we're doing a lot of in-house within sharing things and working together and sharing ideas. Of course, we, we talked about the renovated gym, if you haven't seen it, I invite you to come see it in person, the picture certainly does not do it justice, I think we'll really enjoy coming down there to see that. We are adding smart board technology to pre-K classrooms this year, that's coming very, very soon, so that will be the smart board technology in pre-Kindergarten, all the way through second grade, it's very interactive, very engaging for the students, it gets them very involved, and the teachers have a lot of resources that come with the smart board technology. The whole building has been freshly painted throughout the hallways, the cafeteria, it's a nice bright feeling when you go in, it's a little lighter than it was in the past, it's very welcoming, I think, and also we have new cafeteria tables to add a lot to our cafeteria, and we are very appreciative of the board for approving this thing, and it's really bettered our school a lot. Thank you.
Ms. Richardson.
Okay, the elementary school.
We also have had a wonderful start of the year, through our data retreat over the summer, we had many discussions and looked at our data and decided to implement a few things for improvement this year. We've always had a spiral math review on our weekly test, we want to implement a daily spiral math review, and also add a science and social studies spiral review to our weekly tests, we've had pre and post tests in reading, language arts, and math, this year we have science and social studies pre and post test. Our teachers will start analyzing their weekly tests through our new ThinkGate technology, they'll be able to key the test questions to the standards and be able to do a data analysis on it very quickly and easily. After the first progress report, we're gonna implement an after-school tutoring program by invitation, with some creative scheduling with my teachers, so it won't cost any extra money. We've restructured our pull-out time to protect our science and social studies instruction. In the past, we were concentrating on our reading and math and language arts, and we use some of the science and social studies time to pull kids that were struggling in those areas, this year we're not doing that, we want to protect that science and social studies instructional time, so we reorganized our special cycle time, so we're pulling those kids for their interventions in reading, language arts, and math, and at that same time, our kids that don't need intervention, we're accelerating them for that 20 minutes in those subject areas. For our school culture, our teachers wanted some more positive behavior supports, rewarding good behavior instead of just giving consequences for negative behavior, and if you visit our school, make sure you ask for a compliment card up at the front desk, students are looking for them, we're wanting to catch them doing what they're supposed to be doing, when they're supposed to be doing it, so you could hand a compliment card to them. And then, our last thing we're working on is our teachers are creating a toolbox of teaching strategies, we feel like our teachers are the best instructors, they have lots of good ideas, and we want to be able to make that available to everyone, so that's the things we're doing at elementary school this year.
Two things, Ms. Moore, because I just happened to be heard back to me this afternoon, decided to present a presentation there, the name of the...
Behavior, it's Classroom Dojo.
Do- Dojo?
Yes.
Okay, they have a dojo, I've been in some of those classrooms, and you sit there, dojo is of course a, you know, like a Japanese martial art training, and each child has a little character that fits them.
Yeah, and it's the teachers able to award them quickly, a positive behavior or negative, they're able to email that to parents at the end of each week, and I think some parents here have already received those, so it's a, it's a free program, we had one of our teachers that found it and introduced it to everybody, and I played with it this weekend, and it's really a good program.
It really is unique, I've never seen it, I like it a lot, we'll see how it goes through the year. I know Ms. Moore, one of the days I was visiting, said that that was up on the screen while she was working on something else, and she noticed a student off pads, she just went up there and touched his little character, and it took off a point, and immediately got back on pads, didn't have to say a word, didn't have to do anything, they really want those points, and those compliment cards was the second thing. Teachers, you told me this afternoon, they get five per nine weeks, so there are not a lot of them, they're handed out, so they, they come dearly, if you go in as a visitor, get one, and if you see a kid...
And what we're doing is, it's like a classroom competition at the end of the nine weeks, one grade level, whatever class has the most compliment cards will be rewarded with a pizza party.
That's the technology. Ms. Hannah, the middle school.
I know that may be a little hard to read, and I won't bore you with every detail on there, but there are some things that I want to highlight, basically, all of the goals for this year are based around the CCRPI, which is the College and Career Performance Index, Readiness Index, since that's going to be a huge accountability piece for us, we wanted to make sure that that was our, truly our focus this year. As in the past, we of course want to improve in all academic areas in grade six through eight by increasing the number of students who score on level two and three, we're really focusing on three, we have found that just by meeting on the CRCT is really not enough, we're gonna push for the exceeds, and have already begun that process, we're building benchmark assessments and really fine tuning our instruction to make sure our students are ready for, ready for that. Also, from the CCRPIs, to increase the percentage of student scoring in meets and exceeds on the writing assessment, this has been a challenge for us since I've been at the middle schools, to improve the writing instruction. We had a very meaningful professional learning time this summer with a teacher from a neighboring county who is actually a state assessor for the eighth grade writing assessment, so she was able to give us very valuable training on what are some sort of hints or keys that we can, we can expect our students to do that will really have them excel on the writing assessment. Likewise, we took some time this summer to make sure that all of our resources, our reading materials were at Lexile level, and Lexile is basically the readability of text, the comprehension level for which those materials are written, so we wanted to make sure that the novels we were studying in class and the other materials were, met the appropriate Lexile level, so that we can make sure that students by the end of eighth grade are reading at that high Lexile level of 1050, which prepares them for high school and beyond, reading levels and comprehension. We also, eighth grade is a huge focus on the CCRPI, and we are pushing for our students to have, to pass, you know, of course, all of their content areas in class, and we're going to pay particular attention and really monitor students who are falling behind. We, I'm very proud of the fact that we have some safety nets in place for all students, whether they be gifted learners, special ed learners, even those who are just what we tend to say are average, but we have a plan in place for each of them through some co-teaching, we're able to have some extra time where Ms. Vickers, our gifted teacher, is working with a gifted math class, that frees up a teacher to go to another grade level and co-teach with students who have sort of met their plateau and their grades have sort of been stagnant on the CRCT, so we're gonna push for that middle to go up as well, and so that co-teaching factor's gonna play a huge part in that. And lastly, we want to focus on parent communication, we're very proud of our new webpage this year, and we're gonna utilize that to its fullest potential with parent communication for those parents who have that technology, we have found that our teachers are already building their webpages and have had a lot of communication from parents already this year through that tool, so good things coming, we invite you to come anytime and see what's going on at the middle school.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah.
We have a lot of the same things that you've heard in the other schools in place that I didn't put on my PowerPoint, we're doing pre-tests, mid-terms, and post-tests in all of the academic subject areas, and we're gonna use ThinkGate to track that. Teachers have spent a lot of time during the summer, the academic teachers have worked in preparing curriculum, I didn't put a lot of that on this because I felt like some of these things would be, maybe a little more interesting than some of the curriculum things that I'm doing. This is one of the, is one of the most significant things that I've discovered as we were running numbers and trying to tally where we were after graduation this past May. Right now, our preliminary graduation rate is 77.5 percent, we had a few students that came back that are working on meeting the test requirement, hopefully some of those will in the next few test administrations, but that, the 2011 cohort rate was 64.21, if my memory serves me right, so that is a significant improvement, and Ms. Gaino and the guidance office and the teachers have worked diligently in trying to keep kids in school and get them on track, working with them after school, working through the pyramid of interventions in lots of ways, and that is a very significant achievement for the high school teachers and faculty. One of the next things that's, that's gonna be exciting is a grant that was received by Wiregrass Technical College, VSU, and a network of system area high, or area high schools in the Valdosta area, they wrote a grant through USDA, it's called the Rural Utility Service Grant, and they have purchased, Wiregrass received, the administration of the grant, has purchased lots of very high-tech distance learning equipment, I think Mr. Humphrey has actually seen it in action too, I went to a meeting and saw it, and high-definition cameras, high-definition speakers and microphones, and a high-definition screen where you can, all you have to do is plug it into the wall and hook it into a network outlet, and you can, you can hook up to any other place where you have the little IP address and connect to a classroom that's being taught in Wiregrass, Valdosta Campus, or Douglas Campus, or Irwin Campus, or even Valdosta State University, or between high schools. The opportunities for dual enrollment and providing more opportunities for our kids, where we may have two or three kids that are interested in this particular advanced placement course or this college course, and we don't have enough students to take it, to bring someone here, financially, it's just not feasible for Wiregrass or VSU to send a teacher to our campus for four or five kids. With this equipment, we could serve very small groups of students in many more ways than we do now, and we hope to open up, once the equipment is actually in Irwin County now, and they've got to come through and train and get us, get us hooked up on it, hopefully we'll have it going in January, and can even offer a few courses, we've already got some ideas of some courses and some students that we would like to offer some things for, and use this high-tech equipment to give our students opportunities to courses outside of Lanier County High School, so we're excited about that opportunity for our students. We have two new advanced placement classes that are in place this year, AP Capital started this semester and will continue for second semester, Ms. Montgomery is teaching that class, we have 11 students in that course presently. AP Government will be started, will be taught in the spring, Mr. Sarmons, Brian Sarmons will be teaching the AP Government class. We added AP Lit last year, and we're adding these two this year, and we hope to add a science course next year, so that we'll have four AP advanced placement classes for our upper-level kids. Advanced placement courses and students' performance in those courses is also a part of that new College and Career Ready Performance Index, and we're excited to have these opportunities for our students at Lanier County High Schools, we're looking, we're looking for this to grow as well as the distance learning equipment to add to that value that we can get for our upper-level kids.
So AP class or whatever, do you know, is that through the distance learning?
You can't, you can, you can get advanced placement.
One scenario that was presented to us, if you have, if Bering County or Cook County has an AP Biology class, and you have students that need to take it, and you don't have a place in your schedule to offer that, you can partner between high schools and even share the FTE for that student in that block to do that. Now, there's a lot of detail that'll have to be worked out, but I think the ball is in motion to get those details worked out between Wiregrass and VSU, I'm excited about the opportunity to offer VSU classes on-site through this equipment with their professors, so I'm, I'm really excited about the opportunity that that equipment will open up if we use it appropriately.
Valdosta is actually using this same equipment to offer doctoral classes in their nursing program through the Methodist College of Georgia, they've got, I think, six that just earned their doctorates, using this technology, and all they ever traveled to the campus and have earned their doctorates, so VSU already has it, and it is exciting the possibilities it's gonna open up to offer advanced content in AP classes, and even the demonstration that I saw was from a small school system in Oklahoma, the day that I attended with Brian Hunt, and they could not offer Spanish, they didn't have a Spanish teacher, a language teacher, they were very small, pretty much like our system, but they just had to go to this technology to meet those needs, so I think it's gonna really, we're just cracking that door open to see what, what possibilities, and I'm very excited about what, what it can bring to our campus. Is there another?
Yes, there should be one more. One, one thing that we started working on back in the spring, the student council, is a student rewards program for the high school that would incentivize attendance and good behavior and academics, and Mr. Humphrey and I sat in a meeting with Ms. Lawless, I think, the Family Connection Coordinator coordinated, where we reviewed the Valdosta Keys to Success Program that Toyota sponsored, Toyota and Valdosta sponsored that. We are looking at developing that type of program, and Ms. Lawless has invited me to speak at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, which is coming, I think it's this week, I gotta look at my calendar, where we're gonna look for community input to help, to help bring some, some real-time rewards to the program, particularly goods and services like maybe bits, if you can bring a bits plate in a high school, folks know it's there, they smell it, and that's a, that's a tangible reward that reaches out beyond the person that has it, some things like that, but the ultimate goal that we would like to do, even in a small school like ours, is offer, offer an incentive for our seniors, and hopefully be able to, to be able to give away a car at the end of the school year to a senior who meets the criteria for this Keys to Success Program that we're trying to draft. We've got a pretty good draft of the program and a way to manage and track the program in-house with the staff that we have, and hopefully, when I meet with the chamber, some other pieces to that will start falling into place, and we'll, we'll have something, so we've got some good leads on some support there.
A big question from the board for intricate last minute, thank you, any of the personnel about any of these programs? They got a lot going on, you can see they've been busy this summer, presidents, their teachers, they're busy.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all. Some action items, primary school fundraisers.
We've got the primary school, A is a fall fundraiser from Katie, is that the name? They'll say, they'll say everything with a magazine, because high schools gonna sell magazines, so they didn't go ahead and start with that, it's the little magazine catalog that comes out, they do this, but they need to go ahead and get approved. Next month, we'll have the bulk of fundraising, the field trips put together for you, we just couldn't get it all together by this meeting, so they were somewhat falling between, and that's why you have this for the year.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the primary school funding.
Sure move.
Motion in second, motion in second, all those in favor, aye.
The next is revision of board policy IDD, which is for our gifted, and really going hand in hand, C is to rescind the IDDR, which was an administrative regulation. This is because the state has adopted a new rule for gifted education, and basically, this is all, what you see highlighted and yellowed is, is all that will be in our board policy that we're following the board education rule, and then there will be administrative regulations that will be available online, and those letters have already been drafted, they go out to parents, so if any student that is gifted, Lisa, do you need to say anything else about that?
No, we're going to have the administrative procedures online, and then we'll have them available at the schools as well, and then parents will receive a letter sometime this week indicating the changes from the old policy to the new policy and how it will impact their child for this upcoming school year.
Let's be, and see the revision of the policy and rescind the... Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Or a motion, Ms. Lass, or a second. Second, Mr. Sarmons, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Next is all parent school handbook, there are a few different rules that, that apply to our all school students, middle and high, and this handbook has just been revised this summer, and we didn't do a, you know, the bulk copy because fortunately we don't have that many students that are out there, and we did not have this at the last board meeting, just wanted to be aware of it, go ahead and give a vote on it, if you've had a chance to look at it, if you have any questions. Their time is a little bit different as far as coming and going, they do not, do not introduce system transportation, there's a couple of major things that felt like you need to be aware of, and that we need to get more approved. Ms. Hannah, Mr. Pulppe, if y'all think of anything else that really sticks out about the hospital, it's different.
Yeah, they don't get to attend extra physical functions and activities.
Right, cannot attend extra physical activities. But these, if a student is assigned there, that this is reviewed with the parent, and Mr. Robinson, before they go out there.
You've had a chance to review, Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Sure move.
On the motion, Mr. Wright, is there a second? Second, Ms. Wright, any further discussion? Not for call for question, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Next is the athletic handbook.
Same there, we had one at the high school, but sometime it was given overhaul this summer, just so that you'll know and be aware of the proceedings and policies that our athletic department handles, and I didn't ask Coach White... And I didn't ask Coach White to be here to present it, but I figured if you have any questions, probably they, they probably get it about it. One of the big things, of course, this year is extreme weather conditions with the index and the, the way that they prepare for that. We bought a couple of monitoring devices. That wet ball globe temperature WBGT reading is used to determine how long they can practice and when they get out of pads and when they have to go inside and all of that. It's taken a lot more seriously, and that was due to GHSA policy. Dual sports, that was just clarified. A little bit more dual and overlapping sports is how we handle those kinds of things. WBGT, they've canceled, but they're a lot better than the WB index.
The guidelines for overlapping, in the event that second sport is a game, it does not affect the first team. The athlete may be able to participate in the second team if there is in best interest of both teams and the athlete. I'm assuming somewhere they don't determine this issue, but might have to see. Do you think they're clear on both?
It is in the...
Of course.
We want to do what's in best interest of the athlete and not just the coaches, but we do want to share athletes because in a small system, we have many dual sports and overlapping sports disciplines. So, it will go from the coach. Why AD and self-coverage myself if necessary? Hopefully, we'll never get there. These are things that coaches should be able to agree on themselves in the best interest of this athlete.
Okay. Have a chance to review, Chair, entertain a motion.
Sure.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Mr. Lassner. Any further discussion? Not called for question, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Primary school book fair.
We want to start today, this week, okay? So, we hope you'll approve it. We have it open with here at parent night, the sixteenth. This is something every year.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Sarmons. Second, Mr. Strickland. All of you, favor aye?
Aye.
Opposed? NCC LA discovery training field trip.
About ten students along with a teacher that'll go for the local officer training. Just need to go ahead and get that approved because it's coming up Saturday in Fort Val.
Arrival of field trips, Chair, entertain a motion. Have a motion, Mr. Lassner, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Lassner, any further discussion? Not called for question, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
The last thing, and this is what we added, has to do with a resolution amendment. When we looked at class size, we've been looking at it every day. One area that the high school discovered that they were going to be over was in a gifted class, basically ninth grade gifted.
Ninth grade gifted.
And we had approved a ten increase per class. I know that sounds like a lot, but please keep in mind, boy, a regular high school class, you can have thirty-two students, and the old guideline said twenty-one was the limit for gifted. And so, we use advanced content, and y'all correct me if I misspeak, we use advanced content model, and so, we put our gifted students in there, then we take the higher achieving kids and kind of round out that class. We had that class made, and then I think we have several more gifted ninth graders move in, which is always a good thing to have, but that has put us over with that ten, that will put us at thirty-one, and you're at thirty-two or thirty-three.
We're at thirty-three. There's twenty-six gifted students in that classroom or in those classes.
Right, and, you know, rather than take kids out, we thought it would be easier to bump that to fifteen, and that will be thirty-three will be the class size. And that could change. It could go up and down, but keep in mind, we approved, I mean, thirty-two is a regular class, and these are gifted advanced students in class. I know it's a lot, but it's either take those high achievers out and not serve them, which we really feel that they'd better serve this one. And I discussed this with Mr. Strickland as a possible scenario of what, what we might do to try and serve these kids without having to pull kids out in all of our schools. And this seems like the most palatable way to do. Can't, don't have a place to hire the teacher for that class. This is a group that moves together, and that is our largest. Other than that, we're pretty good. But then that would require bumping that to fifteen. Now, by the state D O E, they require a resolution from the board, which you have in there, and that's the only change. All the other, you've already approved all the others, and if you approve this tonight, that will allow us to leave those high achievers in there and not have to pull them out. And basically, after we adopt it, we just forward it to the D O E, and they're aware that we've made that decision locally. Because of the economy, the state board passed this rule, and they signed off on it. Every state board member said, we're going to let local boards decide how large they can go. So, this would be a class of thirty-three gifted in advanced student.
What's the, how many are gifted? How many are on the...
There's twenty, there's twenty-six gifted students in that ninth grade group right now, so there would be seven students in there that are not gifted. Traditionally, that group of seven students probably traveled in the middle school and elementary school with that group of gifted students as they scheduled through, through their curriculum, and when we set it up, we didn't have that high number, but as, as we had kids through the summer and even kids coming in, we had a new gifted student come in this week, ninth grade. And when we put those gifted, those extra gifted students in there, it just kind of bumped our number up, and our other option was to take those other high achievers, put them in a regular class, and call their parents or request a waiver and leave all these upper-level kids in there in class.
And keep this in mind, though. I don't know that, do you have any other classes with thirty-two or thirty-three?
There are a few scattered around the high schools.
From where the state allowed it to be to where we're at, I think, the primary school, we were in good shape. Actually, the low in kindergarten, where they allowed, the state would allow twenty-one, we approved up to ten more. We have some classes with twenty-two. That's as high as we go, and that's kind of odd. They do allow twenty-two in pre-K, but of course, you do have parents there in twenty-one in second grade. The highest number we have in second grade is twenty-one, and then we have some classes with twenty-two in first grade. We have one, two classes with twenty-one, one with twenty, but then we have the, of course, fifteen, twelve, sixteen, nineteen, fifteen, as far as kindergarten. Elementary school, Serena, I think as far as you're concerned, that third grade, you've got twenty-five is your largest class, so that will put you four over that twenty-one. But then, when you hit fourth grade, it bumps to the old number from the state of twenty-eight. So, you don't have anybody that's at twenty-eight. You've got your highest was twenty-four, and in fifth grade, you have one class that's twenty-seven. That's still under the old rule without even handing anybody. Middle school is, let me find you, Ms. Ham, your largest class is twenty-six in sixth grade, and then Ms. Mazzata has twenty-nine.
And that's another similar situation.
Well, twenty-eight's a regular class size under the old rule. We waved up to ten more, and she has twenty-nine.
So, have any teachers strayed in mercy? I'm just...
No, I mean, they enjoy having those high achievers in there, and they just see the good parts in there.
I'm just saying with the load. I'm just concerned about the load. That's the only thing I'm questioning. Any other sense of blessing at scenes or anything like that?
And let's see, fifth grade, I mean, excuse me, eighth grade is the lowest, and that was just, just the way it runs, you know, some years, they're lower. You've got eighteen, eighteen, thirteen, twenty-one, twenty-one, and a state class of four. Of course, they have different rules and regulations. You don't waive those federal regulations of state classes. But in high school, I think we are aware of where we're asking for that relief, so we're really, really in good shape.
You have a high, the ninth and tenth grade classes, you've got like a hundred and fourteen, a hundred and sixteen, and then your other two classes, I think you've got seventy-two and seventy-eight and seventeen.
Seventy-eight, eleventh grade, seventy-two and twelfth grade.
So, you've got a wide variation between the two, and that just hits those ninth grade, upper-level classes hard with numbers. So, the only other option is to add teachers and reduce those class sizes or take it in that one set of classes, which they're upper kids, they can handle it, and the teachers enjoy those classes like Ms. Ham said.
And that dropout rate just skyrockets when they hit eleventh and twelfth. That's probably where we get a lot of the dropout.
Yeah, later tenth and then eleventh grade. Most times, we get them there through the twelfth grade. We've got a rope tied to them. We drag them across the state. We can keep them that long, they don't have a choice. We can make them.
Any more questions on the, on the resolution? Have, have, I guess in the past, have we always had or combined a gifted and high achievers?
Where you have an honors class, it has to be a homogeneous mix of students. You can have gifted kids, and the other kids that round that class out have to be higher achieving in that particular academic area.
And it's the same at middle school.
So, the primary would use that in that class a lot.
We'll have to replace those higher kids.
I think as long as the teachers are fine with it, that's great. Y'all get teachers that start squealing in the highlight, no?
Do all thirty-three of them live together and stay together all day?
No, not all day, just, just with those academic classes. They'll go to different, different electives during the day, depending on what their selections were in registration and what their, whether they're going to the family consumer science or ag or healthcare science. They spread out in elective classes, and those loads are not as high. It's just in the, just in the academic class that that particular group is high.
Twenty-four.
I don't think, I don't think too many systems that would look at our numbers would complain they were probably improbable that we kept them within reason.
I was just going to mention, too, when we did the regular education up to ten students, that was mainly because of PE classes when we passed that, because we had considered five in the past, but it was because of the PE class, so we work hard to stay within, you know, the lower limits of their class sizes as best we can.
What we've done in the past is approved five, went to ten, and I've got a couple that went up to four. But that's as high as we've gotten with that exception, that one particular class model, we use that gifted advanced content class model, and this has allowed us to still meet their needs and without making a financial strain of having to go out and hire people at this point in time, and without having to disrupt kids' schedules and go and tell those parents, we need to put your children out now, just, you know, it's kind of a happy medium, I think. It's not a perfect world, but it's just...
No, it's not a perfect world, and I'm willing to support it, but I would make this come in. I'm a little concerned that maybe just because these are high achievers, that we're willing to put more of them and make that class bigger just because they're high achievers. To some degree, I think they deserve the same numbers, if you will, and the same amount of time for teachers that a smaller class size does, so I understand our situation, but also, you know, if there's, I almost feel like we're kind of penalizing them a little bit because they are high achievers and they are gifted, and we say, well, they can handle this because of that. So, like I said, I'm willing to support the recommendation, but I would like for us to think about that. Maybe I'm looking at it wrong. If I am, please tell me, but I have a, I have a concern. Having preached a little bit, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm sure all amen to that. We'd love to hire and have more teachers, keep the class sizes small as possible, but it's, we're already, you know, this year, about four hundred thousand into fund balance to add what we have, so keeping an eye on that long-term is kind of a concern. Hopefully, things will, will change in the future.
I recognize it's not always easy to predict, but as you go through that budget process, we didn't necessarily know this at the time, so that's kind of a hard...
And we didn't either. We would have asked for more.
That's right, so it's, it's a, it's a understanding. Chair, any further questions? Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion, Mr. Lassner, is there a second? Mr. Sarmons, any further discussion on the... Not called for question, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Personnel, contract services, is it possible to take all these together?
You can't. If you would look under that, behind that tab, number six, you see the recommendations for special education, and you'll note that for Ms. Ham, Wendy Dengus has a pending completion of degree and certification requirement, so that's a definite pending, but you see all of the others there. I think Mr. Bylon is still being trained.
Yes.
He's scheduled for third-party testing, not this Friday, but the next. As soon as he completes third-party testing, if you approve him, then we could use him as a substitute bus driver. I'm not sure, Ms. Humphrey and these others, I think Jason Frost is good to go, I insist on that sheet, Ebony Sealy, we were good to go, but where the crosswalk guard, of course, was background check, and he's been on the job. We had to put him to work day one, and he's been doing a good job. He helped me top street today. That's part of the other side to get to the elementary school and hit that busy time. Now, the highlighted coaches, if you want to include that, that's coming from Coach White. You see it in the highlighted areas. Anybody that's replacing somebody that we approved before that's either left, changed their mind, or somebody that's new.
I think we'll need to pull that out and do that separately.
Coach John is replacing him with yourself. Right on that separate. I think here is one on Stiffen McGuire. We're good on all these. Or anybody else attending?
She's a resident.
That's the resident, I'm sorry. Yeah, Kyle and Stiffen are resident. That's a reservation, I'm sorry, yeah, Kyle and Steffi are reservations.
So if it's, if it's the board's pleasure, let's, we'll vote on A, B, B, and E. Are we okay there, Suzanne? Everybody follow me? A, B, D, and E. And Chair, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion, Mr. Strickland, second? Second, Mr. Sermons? Call, any further discussion on A, B, D, and E? Not with call for question, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? And on C, from the athletic department, you see those recommendations and Chair, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion, Mr. Lassiter, or second? Mr. Strickland, any further discussion? If not, we'll call for question, all those in favor, with Ms. Humphrey abstaining. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. Charlie, financials.
All right. This is the first financial report for F Y thirteen. Just getting started here, and what, what we primarily look at this month is, we know that our, our local revenue is going to come in later on in the year, in December. The biggest line item of our revenue is our state Q B money. And it was right on track for what we had budgeted for July. And then our expenditures overall are right where they're supposed to be at this point in the year. And our largest function, which is instruction, we, you know, at eight point three three percent of the year complete, we're at eight point two seven. So everything is right on line to that. And we'll move right along to August.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Charlie? I don't think anybody is. All right, anyone here for any public comments?
I'd like to thank Mr. and Ms. Lucans for being here again. I was at a meeting at lunch with them. I didn't get a slice of keelein pie, but it was my fault.
You turned that down.
John made it, but there's a new commander, and you might want to say something about.
Yeah, Colonel Edward Jerry Ford is our new mission support group commander, and he is the new chair. And he is a wee bit more personable than our previous chairman was. And he has been asked to come and toss the coin if the officials will let him. I don't know anything about football, you know. Anyway, he'll be, he'll be there to toss the coin, and we already have made reservations for the base on the guard as well. So we're very pleased about this, this project on the twenty-fourth. But he's, he really is thrilled. He's a, he's a grown-up military brat. He grew up in the military, so he has a vested interest in our children.
Met Colonel Ford today, he's a really nice guy, and I'm glad that he was able to be the guy to come and toss the coin. They've done this at Valos and Lount in the past, and we want to be included and have this military appreciation. It's not this Friday, it's the following Friday for home game. And we'll be letting military personnel to have an I D, present an I D that they and their family can get in free charge. We will be recognizing them, we have a kind of a program that will be geared around it. He will toss the coin, he will be escorted out. And believe me, the new base commander is very, very much a stickler for how things are going to run, very detail oriented, which is the good thing. They run the military, I'm glad they're detail oriented. And one of the other gentleman there today, I think it was Lieutenant Colonel Waldo was all I got, he was an A-ten pilot.
Yeah, that, that gentleman is in charge of the, the big upcoming open house event, right.
Very, very exciting young man, it's just great to see these military personnel and know that they're, you know, we're contributing to the education of their children. And they also will give back to our community, and we're glad we can have this event Friday weekend, recognizing military. And look forward to introducing Colonel Ford to you guys at.